Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Board meeting for Pender County. I'm going to begin with a roll call. Mr. Jordan, I am present.
Present.
Mr. Bowdoin.
Present.
Mr. Pitts.
Present.
Mr. Teachie.
Present.
Mr. Grunfist.
Present.
Ms. Moska is not here. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Pender County. We serve as an appointed, I'm sorry, a board by the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. We have four cases tonight on the agenda to be heard. Okay, we have two cases tonight on the agenda to be heard. Before we begin, it is important for everyone to understand some facts related to this meeting. Now, this is going to be a little different. I'm reading from a standard, what we do every time, but this is a little bit different this evening because the applicant has requested a continuance for the wastewater treatment plant in Rocky Point. So, we're going to kind of got to get away from things. It's going to be a little different. But basically, there's a time limitation for all public hearing comments, and, you know, if you come forward, the applicant and their representatives are excluded from any time limitation. I do not believe they're prepared to present their case this evening. So, that, now, that's for the wastewater treatment plant. Now, the gas station on fifty-three, now, that's different, okay? Anyway, the planning director will keep track of time, and the comments should be limited only those issues concerning whether the rezone, text amendment, or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Cases that are heard by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of this hearing is to gather information so that we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, neighbors, and community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the Unified Development Ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Certain mutually agreed-upon conditions may be imposed on master development plans and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Before we get started, are there any board members who stand to directly benefit financially from any decision that is made tonight?
No.
No.
All right, thank you. We will continue with the public hearing. All right, if you will, please stand and bow your head for a brief invocation and remain standing, and Mr. Pitts will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening with humbled hearts and open minds, asking that you will give us the wisdom so that we may make the decisions that will be pleasing to the current and future residents of Pender County. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
I'm entertaining a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, since you mentioned that the applicant for the wastewater treatment plant has requested a continuance, I'll make a motion to adopt our agenda. However, let's move item seven point two ahead of seven point one to move through that case first.
Okay. Second.
I second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we have, don't have the minutes from last week's meeting, so moving right along, are there any sign-ups for public comment this evening?
Yes, sir, there, oh, excuse me, no, not for public comment.
Okay, so, all right. So, this is, things are going to go a little different. Like I said, I've prepared a brief statement. The applicant has requested a continuance for the wastewater treatment plant in Rocky Point. This happens on occasion. However, with the community turnout that we see before us, we would like to hear your concerns. We ask that when your name is called, to come forward and state your name and address for the public record. We are limiting your time to one and a half minutes so that everyone can be heard.
Mr. Chairman, am I correct to say that this item will be continued to October? In October, in a normal hearing, anyone is invited to come back. We're not making a decision tonight, but you will have three minutes then. We're simply asking that tonight, you keep it short and pithy to address directly what your concern is, to help us understand what we need to research, but also to give feedback to the applicant to provide further information to answer any questions you may have at that next meeting. So, that is the reason to, that we're shortening that public time, just to keep it directly to the concerns you have, that we can get the answers for you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Yes, sir. First on the list is Sharon Mathis.
Mr. Planning Director, do we want to continue it now?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make a motion to continue this. We're still going to have the public hearing, as we've discussed, but I'll make a motion to continue item one point, or seven point two to the October meeting, which will be held here in Bergall, on the, October first. So, mark your calendars. At that meeting, you will have a full three minutes and five minutes if you represent a group.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstain? Okay, thank you. All right.
Please state your name and your address. My name is Sharon Mathis. I live at one oh nine Timber Trails in Rocky Point. My concern is the water runoff. We have had PFOS in our well water, and we now are on county water. It's still got PFOS in it, so now I'm paying for PFOS water. However, there is so much that's running in the ground, in the water, no one can ever the wastewater plant will be clean enough for the deer to drink, the birds to drink, grow your crops. It's going to run downhill to us, and I'm not for it, I'm totally against it. There's just too many people that stand to be impacted by water. It's just not safe, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Pierce, I live at one two four, one two five eight two Ashton Road in Bergall. Start now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was playing for three minutes, so I'm going to try to make it very brief. Mr. Burgess, the owner of B Square, wants to industrialize our community. Mr. Burgess does not live in the community, in fact, not even in Pender County. He wants an income property at a community's expense, a gain he will never have to deal with the negative effects of. He's using land that is residential and agriculture for the purpose of industrial. It will negatively impact our community, the people that live here, our property and surrounding land, not only for the present, but for many generations to come, for our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and more. Not only will it impact the land with the flooding, it's going to impact the wildlife that surrounds the area. That's all I can do in the short.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Jesse Pierce?
Jesse Pierce, twelve five eighty-two Ashton Road, Bergall, North Carolina. I'm against it. I have a lot of concerns, a lot with everybody else, with part of the wastewater runoff. My driveway, as an example, I've been battling for eight years so much. I mean, just recently, I had to put in two four-foot culvert pipes, fifty-foot long, build a bulkhead. It's about the fifth or sixth time I've replaced it. That water ultimately runs its way down Ashton Road, underneath Ashton, onto my side of the road, to go in front of my house, and then back under Ashton. You know, I'm concerned from the wildlife perspective and the impact that it's going to have there. I know we have photos of about every time we get heavy rains, all that flooding, I mean, it floods out our entire property. Throwing another five hundred thousand gallons a day onto that coming downstream is a pretty serious issue. And I would also challenge the thought that, you know, if nobody else would mind drinking that water, instead put five hundred thousand gallons into the water tower in Rocky Point and serve that to the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
My name is Janice Whorl. I live at one two four nine zero Ashton Road. I oppose this facility. I'm like, Mr. Pierce, the area already floods. We've spent numerous, numerous, numerous dollars trying to fight this flooding issue already, so you're talking about adding five hundred more thousand gallons. So you're talking about adding five hundred more thousand gallons per day to come down our way on Ashton Road. It's just devastating to the property, to the vegetation, to the wildlife, to our land, to our drinking water. The li, the list just goes on, and it's gonna run off. It's gonna go into the creeks, the river, the ocean. I mean, it's all gonna just trickle down, and it's endless, it's an endless problem with us already, and adding five hundred more thousand gallons per day, it's just gonna be devastating, and I vote no, and I pray that y'all will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maurice Whirl?
My name is Maurice Whirl. I live at one two four nine zero Ashton Road. One of the major objections to the facility is the odor associated with it. Wastewater smells like rotten eggs, ammonia, garlic, and poop, to say the least. Homes within three miles of the facility will be subject to the odors on a continuing basis, and the best facilities there can only reduce odors, they can't eliminate them altogether. And odors will be extremely noticeable on hot and humid days. If you don't believe it, go down to Twenty-third Street, across from the airport, you know, on a hot, humid day. Even on cold days with no wind, odors still come from the facilities. And based on the Pender County GIS system, the land is considered wetlands, and the soil is characterized as poorly drained, and it's not uncommon to hear raw sewage spills at these type of facilities. And I'll stop there for today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sally Martin?
I'm Sally Martin. I'm, my address is fifty-six forty-five US Halle, one seventeen South, and I live right before you get to Ashton Road. And my husband and I have run a day camp at our farm for fifty years. Next summer will be our fiftieth year operating it, and now we've gotten really popular, and we pick up kids from Wilmington, from, it's all city kids, from upper, upper class people, from Wilmington, from Hampstead. And one of the favorite things that they do, we have, like I said, we have over a thousand kids a year, and one of the most favorite activities that the kids do is hike to the, we call it the waterfall in the back, and it's the creek that will flow directly, will parallel to, to Ashton Road, and it will, will be the runoff of this new treatment plant that they're gonna build, or anyway. But the kids, the kids love to go hike back to the creek and, and wade in the water and, and walk the trails that we made there, and especially after heavy rains, the kids can swim in it, and they have a ball. It's just so exciting for these, exciting for these city kids to, to have this experience and down-to-earth thing. And anyway, if this, if this ever passes and the treatment plant comes, that you're gonna be able to even walk back there, much less wade and swim, and that'd be, that'd be a shame to take away from the kids with this, this down-to-earth fun that they've experienced at my camp. That's my, that's my biggest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Summer Strong?
Hi, my name is Summer Strong. I live at four oh eight Rayford Road. I'm here to support those that live around Ashton Road, especially Ms. Sally Martin, who is just here. I am one of those kids who grew up going to that farm, swimming in that little creek, that waterfall, and it is, to say that we wouldn't even be able to walk back there, to jump in that, that hole that goes up above your head. My dog loves swimming back there. I mean, that's a lot, a lot of children you'd be affecting, and not just here in our county, but in the surrounding counties as well. You know, that amount of water going onto a sod farm, for what? And in this area, the amount of flooding that you see from hurricanes, and hey, we're okay right now, but they have gone through so much. Any of these places near the Cape Fear River do not need any more amounts of gallons and gallons of water being dumped to put them at risk, the wildlife at risk. We want to keep these lands, farmland. We, I would, I would love to move to Bergoff one day, but, uh, I don't know, this kind of stuff makes me not want to, and that's really sad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Johnson?
My name is Kim Johnson. My address is one twenty-three sixty Ashton Road. To get straight to the point, I agree with those who've already, I've spent a lot of money too, trying to clean out ditches, build ditches for the overflow of water that's already coming from Ashton. But along with those lines, with the growth from our neighboring counties, we have seen countless floodings from hurricanes, tropical storms, and weeks of continued rain that has caused wastewater discharge, specifically speaking of Brunswick County. I've spent many of my career in Brunswick County. I've watched that county grow for thirty years, and just recently, as of last month, of course, they had the unexpected flow into the wastewater plants, specifically three of them. This can happen regardless of the capacity of the plant, again, as recent as last month, same one that we suffered from, and we suffer from Florence, more than just the riverbanks. It's in our community too, and we, the people of Ashton, are in agreement that this rezoning would not be good for our community, for the various reasons that you are hearing tonight. I ask each of you to vote no. A yes vote will destroy our residential and wildlife quality of life. We are not in favor of this land being used as an income property from an outsider of our county who wants to destroy it. We have industrial parks and designated zoning areas in the county that is ready for this kind of development, and unless any of you are signing up to volunteer for it to be in your neighborhoods, I can't see why you'd wanna put it in mine. That's it.
Harold Fields?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Harold Fields?
My name is Harold Fields. I live at eleven five oh one Ashton Road, and I'm against it. I, three years ago, applied for a septic tank permit of a thousand gallons, and I was denied, it's not too far from there, and it, at five thousand, at fi, five hundred thousand gallons a day, that's a hun, that's a hundred and eighty-six million gallons of water a year that will be turned on to Ashton. And all through that land there is a bunch of canals, and it's gonna seep into those canals, and it's gonna, all it's gonna do is stay there, and in the summertime, you think mosquitoes are bad now? You, you wait till that happens, if it happens. I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby Williams?
Good evening. Bobby Williams, twelve one fifty Ashton Road. I don't know how I can follow up behind Kim, but you can see my mailbox from the road that this property is being, gonna be used for. All the water from the old railroad track, all the way down, I believe, I understand, to Kelly, comes down through Ashton. The last storm we had, mini hurricane, tropical storm, water was ankle-deep in my yard all the way around. I've asked the state to come take a look, at least trying to do something with the ditches to clear some of that out and give the water some kind of chance to move. Read a little bit about the reverse osmosis, the saline that it produces, destroy, you know, it seeps into the water, destroys the ground for any other crops, whatever. Really, I'm just like everyone else, I'm opposed to this, and I would make mention that anyone who's flown into Wilmington, or driven into Wilmington by the airport, knows when you get to the stoplight, it's not azaleas, and ocean spray you're smelling. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Williams?
Hello, my name is Joseph Williams, one two one, one two one six four Ashton Road. I think this is a, I mean, this is a really easy decision. We're here now because the person who bought this land didn't do their due diligence, wanted to put a bunch of homes there, and that wouldn't pass, and so now he's asking to put a waste treatment system in there. Does that, makes no sense. Like many have said, there's areas more suitable for this, this is a residential area. I just don't think the residents of this area should be straddled with something like this because someone didn't do their due diligence. He could've came to any one of us, and we would've told him that land doesn't perk. Everyone in Pender County knows that the land doesn't perk. And to put, I mean, where are these tanks gonna go? We're gonna, where is all that water in the ground gonna be displaced? When you're putting a fence on Ashton Road, you just dig a hole, throw some quickcrete in there, and the water fills it in. So that's, you know, you guys know that this can't go there, and you're not here to support the interest of someone who has never been or never will be a part of this community. The county commissioners and you are here to support this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Wilson?
Thank you. To the great committee, and to all the people that are here to protest against this.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Will you please state your name for the record?
James Wilson.
And your address?
Six twenty-four McCrory Road.
Thank you.
Bergoff. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But my complaint is like everybody else. Amen. And I think that we should consider everybody, because there's no big IU, and whoever is doing this, want to do this, he should consider it being in his back door, his backyard. And we are against it. I'm an old fellow, but yet I'm concerned about the young people, our children, children, children. And for this type of condition, it's gonna make people sick, and I'm trying to live as long as I can, and I don't want nothing to shorten my days. And I think that it should be considered, and we are saying no, 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 no. And I think that it should be considered, but it's void. Amen. You're the, you're the planning committee, and we appreciate you. We love where you are, so please consider us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Jonathan Whirl?
My name is Jonathan Whirl. I live at twelve eighty-two McCrory Road, approximately one mile from the treatment center. My biggest concern is contamination of ground drinking water. We do not have access to city water here, so we are forced to drink the groundwater. The second is the location of this on poorly drained soils, two types of poorly drained soils. The third is, it says in the proposal, a wastewater treatment plant is needed to irrigate a sod farm. We all know you don't need a wastewater treatment plant to irrigate a sod farm. One example is down on Old River Road, there's an operational sod farm with no wastewater treatment plant. I think the oh-nine proposal, or approval, should be thrown out the window. Let's see, ultimately, the growth is inevitable in Pender County, we all know that, but I think the county should step up and do it on the county level, not privatized for profit, and that way the county will not be the middleman in this county-to-consumer. And in conclusion, I would just like you to take advantage that if you would want this in your backyard, and please vote no. Thank you.
Samantha Whirl?
My name's Samantha Whirl. I live at one two eight two McCrory Road. Basically, ditto to what everyone's already said. The water issue, our ditches are filled with trash and debris from people dumping. It floods already just from rain. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like having five hundred thousand more gallons of water put in there every day. I don't know if you guys have been in the area, but they have been tearing trees down left and right, that's, they're not gonna be there to soak up the water. I'm concerned about it being privately ran and them cutting corners for profit, and what could come of that. And I think if we want to prepare for the future, we need to focus on our infrastructure, our schools, because the more water that's coming, there's a half-mile of potholes going down McCrory Road right now. Ashton is not any better. So I think we need to be responsible and make wise decisions, and it's our job to come here and let y'all know how we feel, and it's your job to listen to the people who actually live here, not someone just in another county wanting to make some money off of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Tommy Jones?
My name is Tommy Jones. I live at one two three three seven Ashton Road, Bergoff. My main concern, or one of my main concerns, would be the fact, no one's mentioned yet, but a beaver loves rushing water. The beavers are gonna dam up these creeks, these existing creeks, and potentially flood the surrounding timber. Now, a mature stand of loblolly pine is worth roughly thirty-five hundred dollars an acre. Potential of two acres on either side of the creeks, fourteen thousand dollars. Mosquitoes have been hit, and Joe had mentioned, the, the digging and putting in sackcrete and it'd be filled in, is because twenty-six inches down, there's a layer of clay, and water does not run off the clay. Another thing with the five hundred thousand gallons per day is water runoff does not produce oxygen in the water. Rain produces oxygen in the water, but that is actually how fish drowned during Florence and during different storms, is because the runoff does not produce oxygen in the fit, any oxygen in the water for the fish to maintain and survive. Those are a few of my concerns. Our infrastructure is not there. Our roads, our grocery store, our schools, we're not prepared for the growth that is trying to come in this side of the county. We really aren't, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Moore?
Well, I think everything's been covered that I was going to say, so I'm, they've covered everything.
Ms. Moore?
My name is Judy Moore, and I live at one two seven six Ashton Road.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that my family has lived on our land for three and four generations now, and we've worked diligently to try to protect the land and be good stewardesses of the land, and I'm sure that all the newcomers that have moved into the area feel the same way about their property, and we don't think we need all of this wastewater stuff in the neighborhood, because it is a residential neighborhood, and it's not any commercial stuff developed on it. And as residents of our county, our community, we'd like to ask that you please vote no to the request for the rezoning, and no to a permit to construct the wastewater treatment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Abby Jones?
Good evening. My name is Abby Jones. I reside at one two two eight three Ashton Road. Let me pull up my notes. I too strongly oppose this plant for the same reasons as many of my neighbors have stated. One thing I would like to mention is the traffic that occupies Ashton Road. We have a stop sign at the intersection, and new homes are being built now. We are experiencing a tremendous amount of growth, and the traffic is of great concern, as I have been the victim of a motor vehicle accident at the end of Ashton Road. We simply do not have the proper highway infrastructure for the vehicles associated with this plant. have the proper highway infrastructure for the vehicles associated with this plant. Another concern would be the decrease of my property value. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Rector. I have two properties within a mile of that. One at 361 Double Eagle Road, which has a well, I'm sorry, it has a county water and a septic tank. The other property is 5241 US Highway 117 South, which has a septic tank and a well. One of my concerns is, I called the county about getting my well taken, or not taken out, but converting over to county water. They wanted $5,300 to put a meter in. So that put that out of the range. My concern is, if this wastewater and underground water seeps over towards my place, like many others, they'll condemn my well, they'll force me to pay the $5,300 in the monthly county bill. At some point, they'll come back, and they will say those septic tanks are no longer valid, they'll force us to put in septic or county sewer and those kind of things. So we start a whole process of charging citizens for services that we really don't need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's James Smith. I live at 11665 Ashton Road. I guess I'm what you call a true local. I was born right here at James Milwaukee Memorial. I've lived here my whole life. I've got a well on my property, it's probably within 100 foot of the property line that we're talking about. So that's literally my backyard. I don't want it there. I'm really concerned with the groundwater, as well as the flooding. So like everybody else says, it's something we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. I'm Douglas Storms. I live at 1242 McCrory Road, approximately a mile from this wastewater treatment plant. I have a shallow well, and I went through getting somebody to come in and see if they could filter my water better. And that cost $4,000. So, all right, let me see what it costs to have a well drilled. That cost $5,000. So that's out. But 2003, 2004, somebody from Pender County came down our road and said, water's gonna be coming down this road two to three years. You can buy an early hookup now, and it's a lot cheaper. The lady that owned the house at the time bought it. And when I bought the house, that was transferred to me, you have it on your records. I've checked it several times. And that was 2003, '04, so that's 18 years ago. I still have no water. So how can we trust Pender County to keep their word? How can we trust these people that are moving in this waste factory? We can't, unless you prove us different. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shawna Reeves. I live at 11959 Ashton Road. I can throw a rock and hit that property that they're wanting to put this treatment plant on. I currently live in a home that is molded, and I tried to purchase a home on my, use my land on McCrory Road and my land on Ashton Road to put my home on that I purchased. My home has been in law for two years, because my land will not perk, because it's too wet to put a residential septic system on Ashton Road. So I know it has to be too wet to put this wastewater treatment facility on Ashton Road. You all heard about how bad our road floods. My home, I have spent in the last 10 years, over $15,000 replacing my well water, because it keeps sinking, and then the soot comes in, and then I have to move it again, because the land is too wet. I have children, they are between the ages of 23 and 4, they have asthma. I have read the side effects of these wells, and to think that you would want to put it next to where people live is atrocious. When this man came in to get it changed to agricultural is what he said. That's the lie he told us. And he's gonna put plants that grow upwards, and it's not gonna be in the roads, some kind of hydro planting. We were all excited. Oh, that's nice, sir. He's gonna put a gun range way away from the houses. That's all he wanted to do. And then to come in and try to do something else, and then something else. He only wants to make money, and it shouldn't be at the cost of my children's health, or anybody that lives around me. I love all these people. We see each other, we wave at each other. It's not fair to us. Thank you.
My name is Wanda Wilson. I live at 11885 Ashton Road. This wastewater facility will be my next door neighbor. I step across my property line, I'm on their property. And my problem is, I did a little research to see how they treat it, and I'm worried about the well, because I have a deep well. Subtanks, like she said, it went and perked. Over 20 years ago, we paid for water to come through, we still haven't gotten the water. But it's a conflict of health reasons is mostly what I'm concerned about. The lady before is my daughter, asthma runs in our family. And anybody, excuse me, anybody else that come in contact with this could possibly get sick. So with everything everybody said, I agree. And it's just a no, we don't need this. Like she said, he said a vertical garden. We went from a vertical garden to just about poisoning us. I say no.
Thurman Johnson.
My name is Thurman Johnson. I stay on Pendley Highway 2649, but I was born and raised there in Ashton. And we've been there for so many years, farming and everything. We didn't have no problem with no water, you know. And like they say, you bring this in here, why couldn't the guy go somewhere else? Out there on 421, there's plenty laying out there clear. He could've went out there. Why put it somewhere where all us born and raised there, you know, to affect us? But my thing is, how he got over there and did what he did already over there without somebody signing something? Somebody know something, but they just ain't telling us. You know, it's just, they're doing stuff under the table, and then when it done, done, we don't know nothing, you know. But that's my concern. We don't need it. Thank you.
Alicia Bolden. Alicia, I think it's Bolden, the last name is unclear. 501 Everett Road.
Hi, my name is Patricia Colich. I live at 125 Spring Chase Lane, Moggi Point. I'm primarily concerned for the people who live real close. I live a little bit further away. But I think what bothers me the most is the lack of transparency. Why does this man want to come in Pender County? And why does he want to build a waste facility? And I'm going to encourage each and every one of us to investigate when they clean that water, what they're able to take out, and what they are not able to take out, that will be rushed into their lands. From my understanding, urine and feces that come out of the human body cannot be filtered for any medication. So every human medication that goes in that waste facility is going to be flushed onto our lands. So I'm asking for you to be a little bit more descriptive and research, because the three letter agencies are not going to give you that information. Okay? The Chevron case proves that. They no longer have the authority, nor do they have the ability to put the regulations on our counties any longer. So if you don't know about the Chevron case, I hope that you would sincerely look into that. It totally discredits every single three letter agency in the country. That being said, I don't trust the EPA. I have poison in my well water I was unaware of. I'm now fighting breast cancer. I don't know how many other people in this room is affected by that. But last year, 2022, I was told 2,000 people came down with cancer in Pender County. 2,000 people. What are we doing to our land? What are we doing to our water and our food? We have a lot of problems. The last thing we need to have is anything else. All right? So thank you very much.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Since I made the motion continue, I'd like to ask staff to direct us a few questions we've heard, to get further clarification and research, and also ask the applicant to be able to provide answers as well. I've heard use, industrial use. Most of the concerns seem to be about the affluent, the discharge, the water coming out, the cleanliness of that, and water runoff, which would also mean flooding. But a lot about the health. I think we're all concerned about health and what that affluent is, and, you know, what is in that affluent. This plant, I believe, is not like the plant that many people referenced at the, that's being proposed at the airport. But I think there are some other plants that we are being, like this being proposed in Pender County. Most commonly, I believe, the one in Scottsville, is that, am I correct? The Pluris plant is very similar to this.
That's my understanding.
So I think that, from a standpoint of odor and so forth, we need to have the applicant be able to provide information about this, specifically this plant, how it works, the odors that would create, the cleanliness of the water, how it impacts groundwater. Let's see, spillage and so forth. There's a few other smaller items, I believe there are two. I think beavers was included and traffic. But those are the main ones I heard consistently. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
The other thing too is, are they gonna be giving us a plan on how they supposedly gonna get the water away?
I will ask them to provide that.
You need to know, I mean, it's nice to say we're gonna dump water, but I mean, you gotta know where that water's going to. And one thing that brought up about the beavers, I can tell you from experience, and right there close to my house, beavers, they can ruin some farmland, because they can have the creeks backed up real quick. So they need to address that for us also.
Yes, sir. I'll send the prepare a plan for how they're gonna discharge the affluent from the plant.
The, a lot of concerns are, and maybe Damian had mentioned it, about this being wetlands. I'm concerned, and many of these fine people are concerned as well, this half a million gallons of water per day will be discharged. Is it going to be discharged onto wetlands? Or is it gonna be discharged onto, what, where exactly is it going to be discharged? This is a, I believe, this is a 10 acre site. Is this, is that correct?
This site, yes, sir, is 10 acres.
But it's, it's, 10 acres is basically where they're wanting to build this facility. 10 acres is not where they're gonna be dumping the half a million gallons a day. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. That's correct. Yes, sir. It would be discharged outside of those 10 acres.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're trying to get some information, so that we can give you information. Like I said, this, this will come back before us again on the October 1st meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And we do encourage you guys to come back and speak. You will be allowed to have your full three minutes, or unless you're representing a group, then you'll be allowed five minutes. But we're just trying to get information right now. We just, we moved you forward so that you guys can be heard. And do we have any other concerns? Just a minute. Did everyone, did everyone get a chance to speak that wanted to speak, even though you haven't signed up? If you, if you hadn't signed up, and you, and you haven't spoken, if you would like to speak, now would be a time.
So we'd be able to speak at night for?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you will. You just have to come and sign up. And it's October 1st, that should be the first Tuesday in the month.
Name's Larry Justice. I stay at Ashton Crossroad 11469. My biggest concern is, what kind of background does this guy have that's gonna do this plant? Does he know anything about a treatment plant? He got a chemical background? What does he know? That's my biggest concern. Then you got a place here, 10 acres. They won't, I guarantee they won't a half acre on that whole 10 acres that are perked. And he's gonna go there and put a mud hole in the middle of that. So I can't understand how you gonna sit here and even think about, has anybody on this board even looked at this place? That'd be a good answer. And, and I'm just wondering, how can we sit here and even talk about when people are trying to put houses on that road and can't even get a permit to put a well in, and a septic tank? So we gonna move a manure plant in here, and, and then you got, your land's gonna go down, because now you got something in there that nobody wants to build around. So all the landowners, all their property values done dropped. You know, it ain't hurting nobody that ain't around it. But the people that live there all their life, all their families, all their grandchildren wanting to live there the rest of their life, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt everything. So I just hope y'all vote no for all this crap now.
My name is Mike Exley. I live at 13600 Ashton Road.
Can, can you repeat that, sir?
My name is Mike Exley. I live at 13600 Ashton Road. I'm concerned with several things about this. Of course, the discharge is the main thing. The, the water would have to be sterilized by some degree to get rid of the contaminants that go into it from the waste, you know. So that affluent I heard mentioned would be sterilized. So that going into a creek, you know, is that gonna kill the creek? It's gonna, you know, it's one thing to be able to drink it, another thing, is it gonna sustain life in a creek, in a watershed? And we do have a watershed there that flows into bigger creeks, into the river. And that's my concern. And I'm concerned with smell and traffic also, but is this gonna kill our area? Thank you.
Are there any others?
Is that for these types of meetings, because October 1st, maybe?
I can address that. Thank you for asking. That's an excellent question. What was handed out before the meeting is separate from this hearing. The county is working on what's called a comprehensive land use plan. So we're working on a plan that will guide growth and development in the county over the next 25 years. And the vision for that next 25 years is set by the people in this room, by the people in the community of Pender County. And those meetings are opportunities for you to come and talk to us and talk to each other about what that vision might be. And so that's why we were passing that information out. So I hope y'all will come to that meeting, or come to those meetings. I mean, we'll look forward to seeing you back on October 1st. But those two things are unrelated in a broad sense.
Is the, is the survey, is it up and running yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Eventually, there'll be a survey that you can go online and take and express your concerns. But there is quite a few meetings that are scheduled. I believe one's at Heidi Trask. It's later this month, and I believe- It's later this month, and I believe there's one in, in Burgaw, where?
There's 10, yeah, one in Burgaw, at the library. Adam, Adam is our subject matter expert.
I mentioned, I mentioned those two because I'm sure most of you are from the Burgaw and Rocky Point area. There'll, there will be meetings, of course, in Hampstead, Atkinson, and so forth. Just if you don't mind. Go to the mic, please, or...
Hi, everyone. I know I spoke a bit before the meeting, a little while ago, but if you weren't here or if it wasn't clear what I was talking about, thank you, Daniel, for explaining some more. But there will be 10 meetings for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. That's not this case or any of the cases, but it impacts those broadly. And so these 10 meetings are gonna be all around the county, tried to really spread them out. So if you see these little blue pieces of paper or the white ones I handed out earlier, it starts Tuesday, September 17th, there'll be two meetings. And then a few a week through October 3rd. So just, I'm just gonna quickly read out the locations. Please come ask us about them to get more details, or grab one of these flyers that are out there. So Penderly Auditorium, the Burgaw Rail Depot, that's Tuesday, September 17th. Wednesday, September 18th, Atkinson Town Hall and the Willard Outreach Community Center. Thursday, September 19th is the Hampstead Annex Auditorium. Tuesday, September 24th, the Surf City Municipal Complex. Wednesday, September 25th, we'll be at the Barn at Poplar Grove. Thursday, September 26th, we'll be at the Maple Hill Community Center. Wednesday, October 2nd, Heidi Trask High School Cafeteria. And Thursday, October 3rd, Morse Creek Missionary Baptist Church. And the times and addresses are on those flyers. Please let us know if you have any questions about those, we'd love to talk to you in more detail, but not to take up too much time tonight on that.
Now, Adam, if they didn't get a paper, is there a county website where that they can go and these meeting dates will, will be posted?
That's right, yeah, it is on the county website. If you know how to use QR codes on your phone, you can scan that, that you see there. There's, you can probably turn to your neighbor because there's a lot of flyers out there and get that as well. Take a picture of it if you need to. It is on the county website. Or you can come see us here, or call the planning department, we can get you those details if you don't have that. Okay? Sorry, I don't have more copies. There's a few floating around, you can grab one of these blue ones, they're out there. And there's also a flyer right outside too, a big one. You can take a picture of it.
Alright, thank you, Adam. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Wesley Everett, I stay at 4274 US Highway 117, South in Burgaw. I understand why we're saying get a water treatment plant. I got a question to ask to everyone. How many water treatment plants do we have in Pender County? I think the next meeting we have, we should have that written out, how many treatment plants we have in, in Pender County? If we do have water treatment plants in Pender County, are they located in the areas close by living areas? Are they set, are they, would they be setting out in areas where no people are inhabited? And I lived in San Antonio, Texas for 25 years, and I saw water treatment plants. I know we have to pay to have water treat, have our water treat, other counties if we don't have a water treatment plant here in Pender County. But if we are gonna bill a water treatment plant, why don't we bill it in an uninhabited area where no people are located at? So it won't disturb them. And then the water will be circulated so that by the, by the time it hit the river something, it will be going through enough treatments for it will be safe for anything and everybody to drink.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Everett. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we are moving forward to the next. You, you have had an opportunity to speak, sir. Well, come back to the next. Alright. Is there gonna be a representative from this company that's knowledgeable what's happening in October 1st meeting? Yes, sir. That's it? Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the convenience store located on Highway 53 and Shaw Highway. So we'll give these ladies and gentlemen a few minutes.
Yeah, there's some that come.
Alright, Adam, are you, if you're ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank y'all for the opportunity to talk about the comprehensive plan as well. I'm here to present case Rezone 2024-70. It's a conditional zoning map amendment application. Hardison Building Incorporated, as the applicant and owner, is requesting the approval of a conditional zoning map amendment to rezone two parcels, zoned RA or rural agricultural, and one parcel zoned RP or residential performance to a conditional zoning district. The purpose for the rezoning is to allow for a gas station with convenience store. Just to give a vicinity map of the, the area, you'll see the parcels in, in red there along, at the intersection of NC Highway 53 and Shaw Highway, just a little north of Holly Shelter Creek and the state boat ramp at, near there as well. The aerial view of the property shows that it is currently vacant and mostly wooded. At one point, there was a manufactured home on the, the property, on the eastern part of the property there. And here are some street view pictures as well, so you get a sense there's some, some open areas, but a lot of wooded area as well. The proposed conceptual site plan on this 5.46 acres for gas station, convenience store, and convenience retailer shows a 5,000 square foot convenience store, five fuel islands. And you'll see two driveways there, one on Highway 53 and the other on Shaw Highway. As mentioned a second ago, the proposed uses for this conditional zoning application are gas station with convenience store, that's NACs Code 44711, which corresponds to retailing automotive fuels and convenience store or food mart items. And it may provide automotive repair services as well as proposed use of convenience retailer, that's 445131, which is focused on retailing a limited line of grocery items similar to a convenience store or food mart. And here are the, the proposed setbacks for the, the proposed buildings. In terms of landscaping and buffers along the roadways, typical commercial buffer along roadways type A1, you'll see that at the top and bottom there. North and west is 15-foot wide with canopy trees, two understory trees. And on the residential property boundaries to the east and south, it's C1 buffer, which would include a six-foot fence. The trip generation projections for this project would require a traffic impact analysis when that project is, a site development plan is brought in the future, if this is approved. As mentioned before, there are two driveways, one on Shaw Highway and 53, or 24 parking spaces provided. The annual, or the, yeah, the annual average daily traffic count for NC 53 in 2021 was 5,300 trips. They're looking at environmental stormwater utility concerns. The property is located in the 500-year flood zone, you'll see that on the map there. It's in the, the yellow area at the corner, at the intersection. It is, as you can see, very much nearby the AE flood zones, which is the 100-year flood zone. The application did not attest to any wetlands being present, but the Division of Coastal Management notes that there is the potential that wetlands could exist on the property. And of course, the Army Corps of Engineers would be required to be, to review and approve any, any, any development or disturbance of those wetlands. It is not part of an area of environmental concern. Utilities for the property would be septic or, and well, not or. And then proposed conditions of approval, seeing as this is near flood zone area would be, and I'll cover this in a little bit more detail in a minute, but the buildings and utilities would be elevated to 23.6 feet above the base flood elevation. And, and improved storm runoff requirements would be part of the conditions as well. In terms of zoning, as you can see, it's rural agricultural zoning. For the most part, all the way around these properties, there are low-density residential, agricultural, and vacant lands. But you'll see there in yellow along, near the end of Shaw Highway, there are several half-acre lots zoned for residential performance. One of those lots is one of the subject parcels. And I wanted to, to make a note here that because that one half-acre lot is included in this proposal, that is primarily the reason why this is being brought as a conditional zoning application. A convenience store with gas station would be able to be pursued through a special use permit in rural agricultural zoning. But since they wanted to include this parcel as well, it's my understanding that's, that's why this conditional zoning application was brought forward, as you're hearing it. With the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the area is rural agricultural, of course, supporting agricultural uses, but some commercial could be permitted where compatible with existing neighborhoods and as a resource and employment opportunity for area residents. But desired uses are single-family dwellings that are detached, manufactured homes and recreation in open space. Inappropriate uses are higher-density residential, most commercial, office, and institutional development, and industrial. Staff's evaluation of the project is to recommend approval and that the proposal would serve as a community resource for the neighboring area of the nearby boat ramp and motorists along NC Highway 53. While it does not directly align with the stated primary uses of the rural agricultural future land use category, the development could serve as a community resource. And there are three policies in the future land use plan that support this proposal as well. The proposed conditions of approval are, one, the project shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. Number two, the applicant shall meet all other local, state, and federal regulations. And the next two are the ones I mentioned earlier. The top of the first finished floor and all attendant utility equipment, including the HVAC system and electrical panel, shall be elevated so that it is at least 23.6 feet above mean sea level. And that is based on the, the closest flood elevation that we could tell in that 100-year flood zone that's just a little across the street, across Shaw Highway from that property. And the fourth condition would be the project shall be designed so that the post-development runoff for the project shall be no more than 10% more than the pre-development runoff for the 10, 25, and 50-year return period events and be analyzed for the 100-year event. And that is, concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I think the...
Adam, is that, is that one residential lot, is that part of an association at all, or is it just kind of a freestanding lot?
I, I do not believe it's part of any association. I could be wrong about that. It's vacant currently.
Adam, this 23.6 feet above, you said previously, above base flood elevation or mean sea level, how does that correspond with the 100-year flood plan?
Daniel, do you mind chiming in on that one?
Yes, sir. So the 100-year flood zone, and I'm gonna refer to preliminary flood maps, that's the best available data that we have. They're gonna be adopted January 17th, or become effective January 17th, 2025. The preliminary flood maps give an approximate height of how high the water will be in relation to mean sea level during the 500-year flood event, which has a 0.2% chance of occurring annually. Florence was a 1,000-year flood in some parts of Pender County, based on the volume precipitation. What this condition of approval is saying is that the first floor and all the attendant utility equipment has to be two feet above what is modeled to be a 500-year storm.
Now, Floyd, was that considered a 500-year flood as well, or is that?
It's hard to, it's difficult to say for each area, and I don't, I don't know specifically about Floyd.
Floyd was in 1999.
Right.
It basically is the Florence, before we had Florence.
Right.
My concern, my concern is not necessarily the utilities. My concern is where the, where the field, you know, the tanks are going to be, I guess, underground.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we did talk with state agencies about that. And there are laws in place, from our understanding, that really anchors those tanks underground, you know, straps them down.
Right.
And, and some sort of engineered, you know, process. And, yes, sir.
I understand. I mean, you know, I mean, we live in Pender County, I mean, you dig down three feet, you're gonna hit water. That's, that's not the concern. I mean, all, all gas stations have tanks, probably 95% of them are underground. My concern is where those tanks are filled. There's usually areas in the parking lot or, or... There's usually areas in the parking lot or, or aside from the parking lot where, where you have your fuel receptacles. I'm just curious is what the base height for those fuel receptacles are, so that if you have a five-hundred, uh, year flood event, that the water doesn't go down in the tanks and flush the fuel back out. That's my concern.
Yes, sir.
So, do you have an elevation for that?
I'd definitely like to defer that to the applicants, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Do we have any more questions?
Do we know the current elevation, average elevation for that property now?
I do not offhand. Are you speaking of the property elevation or the flood elevation?
Property elevation.
I, I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
I've got the contours pulled up on V I S. It's roughly twenty to twenty-one feet.
So, we're not talking about that much?
Right. So, that's above mean sea level?
Correct.
And Adam, the one lot across the street on the corner, what, what is, what is that? Is that just a residential?
Uh, there are, um...
So, the one this way next to, uh, off of Shaw Highway? Well, on the corner of Shaw?
Right there?
Yeah.
Um, I cannot remember off the top of my head, I'm sorry if... Okay.
There's nothing there.
Okay.
It, there, I, I think there were some houses that were flooded during Florence, and they've, um, I believe there's nothing there now.
There is a house right across fifty-three.
Yeah, there are, there are houses, you know, in this area. I'm sorry, I couldn't remember which exact lots had houses.
Are there any more questions for staff at this time?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, hold on, um... The normal procedure is the county presents its case, then the applicant presents their case. After the applicant re- presents their case, then if you've signed up, we will let you come up and speak. So, please give the applicant time to come up and, and, and do that. We can't, we, this is, this is how it works normally, okay? Will the applicant please come up? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Samuel Potter. I'm an attorney from Wilmington. Um, you should recognize me from our late night on Wednesday night.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bodine, I'm sorry you missed out. Um, so, the applicant here is Hardison Building, and, uh, he owns, Mr. Hardison owns the property here on the corner, as well as the property going back towards, uh, the river. And Mr. Hardison's vision for this property was that it's located about equidistant between Maple Hill and Highway forty. And between Maple Hill and, uh, really until you get to Burgaw, there are no gas stations along that area. Uh, there is also a boat ramp, uh, located just down Shaw Highway, uh, just off of Shaw Hi- Highway, uh, where people can put their boats in. And also, there's no place nearby for, for them to fuel up either. So, his vision was this location strategically located on the corner of Shaw Highway and Highway fifty-three, uh, and as the staff report, uh, showed, there's about fifty-three hundred cars driving by there at, at peak hours. And so, it's a place that people are driving by, it's a place where there's not a nearby gas station, it's a place where you can offer and, and sell, um, goods and services to people in the area, not just driving from, say, Jacksonville to Burgaw, or I drove by there twice this weekend going to the Outer Banks, um, but also people going to the, um, boat ramp to go fishing or spend some time on the river. During the staff report, they, uh, showed the projected number of trips, uh, that will make use of this property traffic-wise. And, uh, Luke Minus, who is, uh, the engineer on this project, is more qualified to speak to this than I am, but Luke explained to me that, you know, when you're, when you're a gas station, you're not a destination. You're not bringing traffic to the site, it's mostly people that are driving by. So, we believe the traffic, real-life traffic impact of this property will be relatively insignificant. This property could be developed residentially, which, as I know this board is seriously concerned about, would bring, uh, more students to an already overcrowded school system. So, this would allow commercial redevelopment of a property without adding to the overcrowding school system. I, I trust from the questions that you asked that you have some technical questions, that Mr. Minus is the more appropriate person to direct those questions to, but if you have any questions generally about the project, I'm happy to answer them if I can. Otherwise, I'll have Mr. Minus come up and speak to your concerns, uh, Chairman Jordan about, uh, flood height elevations, uh, and that type of thing.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Potter at this time? All right, thank you. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hey, good evening, I'm Luke Minus with Stroud Engineering at one oh-two D Cinema Drive in Wilmington, and, um, happy to, to take any questions you've got.
Yes, I, I had one earlier, um, about the elevation, um, the height of, uh, the, the fill valves or the fill, where you fill the tanks. Do you, do you have an elevation? Uh, now, I know you, that, that there is, uh, some stipulations on, um, the heights of the panels and so, and so forth. I'm just curious is, uh, the height of the fill valves, you know?
So, the, the condition that staff is requesting and we're, we're fine with is the finished floor, uh, mechanical equipment, HVAC, uh, ev- everything that would basically shut the place down to be filled to elevation of twenty-three point six, which is a two-foot freeboard above the hundred-year, or excuse me, the five-hundred-year flood zone, uh, which on the preliminary map is twenty-one-six. Uh, with a finished floor of twenty-three-six, you're going to end up with the areas in the parking lot that you're talking about approximately a foot lower than the finished floor. Now, those caps are sealed off. When the whole thing goes underwater, it does, it's not taking on any water in the fuel, uh, tanks. Fuel tanks are vented, they're, they're vented up above the canopy. It's, you know, there, none of us are left here in this room if it floods the top of the canopy at this place. Um, so, there's no, uh, negative impact from fuel with the whole parking lot being underwater. Now, having said that, currently, the effective flood zone is sixteen point six, the nearest hundred-year flood zone, we're out of that, but the nearest flood zone is, is sixteen-six. The effective goes out in January, preliminary is seventeen-eight, so that goes up by about a foot, uh, foot and a couple inches. We're still about three or four feet above that, uh, hundred-year flood zone. And then our topography is anywhere between twenty and twenty-two on that site, so we're, uh, coming up about a foot and a half to two feet. Uh, so, we're, um, well above any known flood events. I believe staff provided an email, uh, from, uh, Tommy Batson, speaking of some flood events that y'all inquired about earlier. During Floyd, uh, Tommy Batson reports that Carson Smith used that intersection of Shaw and fifty-three to land a helicopter for doing some kind of rescue or, uh, whatever they're doing out there. So, the pavement was dry during Floyd. During Florence, uh, he reported that there was about a foot of water on parts of the site. So, with the fill we're proposing, our finished floor would still be high and dry in a Florence event, should that happen again, which it likely could, but we're, um, not in any kind of danger of going underwater during that event.
And you're saying that the, that the, uh, the receptacles are...
Sealed, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do, are there any more questions for Mr. Minus? Do I have any more questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for Mr. Potter at this time? All right, thank you. All right, do we have any sign-ups?
Yes, sir, we do.
Good evening, um, Roy Joyner, I live at forty-six, forty, Crumbs Bridge Road, and, um...
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Yes. My name's Roy Joyner, I live at forty-six, forty, Crumbs Bridge Road, uh, right here in Burgaw. Um, some of the, um, concerns I have, and, and I, I do want to say this about the flood elevation that you were provided a minute ago. The, um, Hurricane Florence was over twenty-five feet, uh, from the reading on the Burgaw Bridge, just, just so you're aware of what it is. And I rode by there in a boat, uh, by that property to get to my place. So, uh, I have pictures and everything of the sign and all that, but, um, I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, as you all know, the, uh, Holly Shelter Planning Area, and I'm getting most of this stuff, ju- I just read through the Pender two-point-O, uh, it's fifty-seven point twenty-three percent dedicated to environmental conservation, which includes a lot of natural heritage areas with exceptional importance. For example, uh, Northeast Cape River Flood Plain, Angola Bay, Holly Shelter Game Land, Bear Garden, Shelter Swamp Creek Flatlands, and, um, this, this site sits almost like directly in the middle of all that. And that's, I'm just getting that out of the Pender two-point-O. Uh, and the rest, uh, well, not the rest, thirty-eight point fifty-eight percent is rural agriculture. So, uh, and according to the Pender two-point-O, I know you guys said you were working on a newer, uh, vision, but according to the current one, uh, the rural agriculture areas are, uh, you know, the county supposedly supports these rural agricultures. There's hardly no commercial, uh, anywhere. Uh, there's an industrial site not far, there, there is maybe one or two, but it's like very rural agriculture. And, uh, some of the inappropriate uses, uh, are most commercial, office, and institutional development. Uh, just want to go over a couple of, uh, so, and this is out of the Unified Development Planning Ordinance, the current one, uh, some of the approval criteria for rezoning. You guys, I'm, know all this, but I'm just going to say these ones and then kind of give a little something. Uh, be detrimental to the natural environment. Uh, my concern is soil-water impact, uh, soil-water impact, you know, fossil fuel contaminants leaching into soil-water. I know we heard from the gentleman saying that it's sealed. I, I don't know enough about it to make those determinations, and I hope you guys will definitely look into that. Uh, impact surrounding agriculture lands, silver culture, repairing a river, well-drinking water, most, everybody in that area is, you know, well-water. Uh, plant and wildlife communities, and of course, those natural heritage, natural areas and non-coastal wetlands that are within that area. Uh, the, uh, health and safety or welfare of residents, uh, flood, you know, stuff happens with the flood, uh...
Mr. Joyner, your time is, is, has expired. Can you just kind of wrap it up really quickly?
Yes, sir. Uh, public interest, there's a gas station eight miles, ten minutes one way, eight miles, ten minutes the other way. Uh, no county water or sewer in that area, so the infrastructure and, uh, I, I request you vote no on the rezoning, this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner.
Members of the board, thank you. My name's Doug Keenan, we have, uh, have property at three eighty Orchid Road, which is just off of Shaw Highway here in our county.
Mr. Keenan, could you state your, your name and address? You did state your name, but...
Three, three eighty Orchid Road, Doug Keenan.
Okay, and your, your property is at the same...
Three eighty Orchid Road.
Okay, all right, got you.
Oh, right. A similar proposal was brought forth, probably close to ten years ago, um, gas station. As a community, we have the same concerns today as what we had then, and one of the concerns at the time was the lighting, uh, people, uh, with egress outside of the gas stations on fifty-three and Shaw Highway. There is a house on fifty-three across the road, and there's two homes on Shaw Highway across from the gas station. When vehicles are coming in and out late at night, um, you know, th- those folks that live in those homes are going to see that. That, that's really going to shine in their, their area. Uh, the next thing of concern at the time, and it's still a concern, is the traffic speed. I'm unaware of any other gas station in Pender County that, uh, has a gas station on a two-lane highway where the speeds are fifty-five miles an hour. Everything else is on a two-lane or a four-lane highway. So, some traffic studies would have to be done there. I can tell you that it, I don't think it's safe, and if you do have an accident there, very good possibility of, you know, a vehicle getting into either of the homes. Uh, we talked about flooding, the other people talked about flooding. Uh, Floyd, uh, Mr. Potter was correct, there was not a lot of water on fifty-three at the intersection, but there was water. Uh, Florence, there was a lot of water in Florence. Um, that property, you know, we talk hundred-year flood plans and hundred-year flood zones. The, the flooding is just about every five or six years when it gets close to this property. I know because I have property just right down the street from it. Um, and that's not going to get any better with the amount of development that we have in Pender County. I don't think that the, the flood maps are accurate, that, uh, as far as being a hundred year and five-hundred year. I think our hundred year is the new twenty year, and the five-hundred year is going to be our new hundred-year flood zone. And then finally, our emergency resources. We're, you know, eight to ten miles away from getting fire EMS, um, that's a huge Law enforcement is another concern. We had a fire out at the boat landing probably eight or nine years ago, and it was literally twenty minutes before we ever got the first sheriff's deputy to even come. Um, I'm assuming if it's like the gas station at Maple Hill, it's going to have one attendee, very hard to manage that, uh, you know, from a, from a resource standpoint. You know, if there is a problem, if there's robbery, and, you know, if the individuals flee on foot, they've got literally less than a hundred yards going any direction to get into a residence. And I'll say finally, I know time's running out here, but finally, you know, this is a, always has been surrounded by game lands, residential, small residential footprint, but mostly game lands and land set aside for everybody in Pender County to enjoy. And a gas station, in my opinion, does not fall into that enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Robert Keenan?
Well, may, Mr. Chairman, I've got headouts to pass out everyone. I think it will help with my presentation, could probably help clarify some questions that you have.
Thank you, sir.
And it's, uh, my, uh...
您的责任
Evidence in opposition.
Mr. Keenan, are you representing the group?
No, I'm here in my individual capacity because I live at three eighty Orchid Road, which is right next to the game landing, which is right down, immediately down Shaw Highway, which, uh, Mr. Hardison's property surrounds where I live, and I've been living there for about twenty-five years, and my family's owned the property for, uh, close to fifty years. And so...
Mr. Keenan, let me interrupt you for a minute.
Yeah.
I did ask you a question.
Sure.
Would you go ahead and please state your name and your address for the record in case we...
Sure, it's Robert C. Keenan, Jr., three eighty Orchid Road, Burgaw, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Um, in your packet, uh, I've got it broken down. One of the first things I like to talk about is the applicant never sign the application as the owner. Um, Mr. Hardison owns the property, these three tracks in his individual name, and he's never signed that. That's a procedural matter. Next matter, deal... Next matter deals with the zoning of the property. The track down here, right here, and this track right here are both residential performance. And this here is RA. And I know that the staff had said that only this was RP, or residential performance. But in your packet, I checked with the GIS today to confirm that those two tracks are, in fact, residential performance. And in your table of permitted uses, the, which is this right here, and I've highlighted for you. In residential performance, you cannot have a gasoline station, only an RA. The further track over here is RA. What his proposal is site development plan is rural performance. So he cannot do what he's asking. Next, the five-hundred-year flood. I know there's been some questions about what the water looked like on that property. If you'll go to these photographs right here. That shows you where it was at that intersection, being Hurricane Florence. There's three pictures there. That shows you where that water stood at that point in time. As my brother said, five-hundred-year storms are more common than what they once were. And my concern is, is this. I have researched all the primary roads in Pender County. There's Highway four twenty-one, seventeen, seventeen, one seventeen, fifty, fifty-three, two-ten, and Highway eleven. Those are our primary roads in this county. There is no convenience store or gas service station located in a five-hundred-year floodplain within Pender County. And if you approve this, you're authorizing a convenience store to go in the five-hundred-year floodplain. And the next thing is the traffic. The traffic out there, because I have to go there every day when I go to work, the traffic is horrendous. And as you see on the site plan, you don't see any decelerated lanes, no turning lanes, which definitely will impact the traffic. That'll be a bad intersection. That'll cause a lot of traffic accidents. And we all know that DOT, and they make their recommendations, do not make very good recommendations when it comes to traffic. Look at Maple Hill. They got a four-way stop sign at two primary roads that come together. Should be a traffic signal there. Doesn't make a lot of sense. Finally, whenever you are doing your evaluation, you have to look at the UDO. And I'm asking you to look at section three point three five, which deals with the impacts and the things that are required to be reviewed as part of this decision-making process, as well as section three point three nine. Whenever you look at that, you'll understand that one of the things that we're concerned about in our community is the biodiversity of the wildlife that is there. Holly Shelter gamelands are there, and our area is high on biodiversity. So we're asking you to look at that. We're also asking to look at the neighborhood. You put a commercial site there, you'll destroy the neighborhood that we live in. And if anyone complained about not having somewhere to get some gas or to get some food, they should have already told us about that. You should have already heard about that, and that should have been an issue. But that is no longer an issue. Never has been an issue. So what we're asking for you to do is to do the thing that you're really required to do, which is to look at the comprehensive land use plan, look at these impacts that we're talking about, and tell the water commissioners that you recommend no for this project. Because this project is not good for Pender County, and it's not good for the community, and it's not good for the rural agricultural area where we live and where we support with our tax dollars and our sales tax and everything else. So therefore, I'm asking you to vote no on this.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Blake Thomas.
I'm Blake Thomas. I live at eight-eight four-eight fifty-three east. I live right across the street from where this is going in. I can't really say much more than what he already said, but I'll just say my two cents. Flood, traffic, crime. I got a picture of the Shaw Highway sign that it's basically covered in water from Florence. So that's like six feet of water right there. I don't know where you guys pulled your data from, or if you guys even been out there during Florence. There's a ton of water out there. My house is a new house. The old one was destroyed from Florence, so there's too much water there to begin with. As far as crime goes, I pulled a Freedom of Information request from Pender County Sheriff's Office regarding that Scotchman down where fifty-three and fifty intersect. Basically, this gas station will just turn into that same situation that's out there. The information request was two hundred pages long of calls for part of the sheriff's department to come out there. I got a couple that I printed off just so you can kind of understand the situation out there. January thirteenth of this year, domestic dispute. January twenty-fourth, fight in progress. January twenty-seventh, suspicious activity. Janu-, uh, this is, this is June thirtieth, and it's breaking and entering just occurred. Uh, let's see, this is June twenty-first, intoxicated driver. Now that kind of caveat off that, intoxicated driver. Just had one in my ditch at the end of last year. He crashed into my ditch, and police had to apprehend him, and he was fighting him in my front yard. On top of that, you know, I've only lived there for two years, but these are just pictures of cars that have been in my ditch. I've had about eight or nine vehicles in my ditch. I've personally pulled four of them out myself. And I just, you know, more flooding. We got, you know, everyone knows the classic sign of Holland sign out there being covered in water. Everyone's seen this. It's a house just down the road. All you see is the roof. I mean, it's pretty clear I'm, you know, not for this. I don't see how it makes sense. Like Mr. Keenan said, eight miles in either direction, you got gas. It's ten-minute drive. You can't drive ten minutes. I mean, that's ridiculous. Not to, you know. This goes in, me personally, I'm gonna be waging war against the same people that are committing crimes at the Maple Hill gas station. It's gonna be right in my front yard, and I'm gonna be doing battle with that. And I got a daughter. I got another daughter on the way. I'm not dealing with that. I don't want to deal with that. I don't want to deal with the traffic. Traffic's already bad enough. There's accidents left and right, semis jackknife all the time on fifty-three. People drive like crazy. I have to slow down and make that left-hand turn across oncoming traffic to get in my driveway every single day. And every single day, I'm almost T-boned, or I'm almost ran off the road. People pass on the blind curve. If you go further down the road going towards Maple Hill, people pass on that blind curve all the time. I've been in multiple head-on, multiple opportunities where I could have been in a head-on collision. Traffic won't get any better. It's gonna get worse. And that's my thing. Traffic, crime, and it's already bad enough as is with flooding.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Todd Price.
What was that name?
Todd Price.
Todd Price.
My name's Todd Price. I live at eight-six-six-three NC Highway fifty-three. I live about five hundred feet west on the same side as that gas station. I'm the first property that's opened. I bought that property because it was in the middle of nowhere. Eighty thousand acres of gameland. I mean, my grandkids live in Wilmington. I'm thirty miles away from there. I used to sit on the New Jersey Turnpike for hours every day on the train. It took me an hour and a half to get to work, two and a half hours to get home. I bought that property to be in the middle of nowhere. You know what? If you bought a piece of property out there and you're lazy enough that you can't drive ten minutes to go to a gas station, then why did you buy it?
Real.
For real. Yeah. My quality of life, I spent every dime I had on that property. Now I want to sell it just because of this. And I'm gonna take a loss because I spent money cleaning the trailer off that was on the property. My blood and guts, I could never get back to labor. There's no way, you know? And for a fact, the water was at my fingertips because that's where the water line on the trailer was. I don't really care about the flood. You know, so what if floods, whatever. My thing is quality of life. I bought that thing out there for the reason to be there. I knew forty was seven miles down the road. I know Burgal's eight and a half miles. I know that Maple Hill gas station is six and a half miles from where I live. Okay? I just don't... And my biggest problem is, you know what? When I left Jersey, my property taxes were close to seven thousand dollars a year for nothing, for nothing. The average in my town was thirteen-five, something like that. I don't want to hear anybody complain about taxes ever in this town. When you drive through towns like Hampstead, and there's buildings going up left and right, and schools and everything. And you know what? Three years ago, when I bought this property, it was like, man, that was happening. And all of a sudden, everything's exploding, you know? So when all your tax bills come in, when everything's reassessed in the next year or two, because they were out on my property last week, two weeks ago, and when everything's reassessed, and your tax bills go up, don't cry because that's what happens with development. And unfortunately, you guys don't have the money and the attorneys and everything to fight these developers. I see my dad's, my buddy's dad make fourteen million because he fought and fought, fought about that Affordable Housing Act because he wanted to build an apartment complex. And my town wouldn't let it build, wouldn't let him build it, wouldn't let him build it. And it cost a tax of fourteen million back in nineteen seventy-eight. So what do you think that would be worth now? So I'm gonna be dead in a few years, and my kids will have to deal with this. I was a glazer. I sucked in chemicals my whole life. My father did floor covering. I lived in a paint store. I won't be around that long. I bought that property for a legacy for my kids that like to hunt and stuff like that. And unfortunately, this is what's gonna turn into... Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
That's it for sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
I pulled the property up on GIS, so it is mislabeled according to the presentation that was given to us. The corner property is residential performance.
It's mislabeled, but it is not residential performance. Property is zoned rural agricultural or RA. There's a label on the tax card that says RP, residential performance. That is a data entry error. The zoning map is the official zoning map of the county as shown on GIS, not what's shown on the, on the information on the side of GIS or on the tax card.
So how do we have that corrected, or how long would it take to have that corrected?
I can reach out to tax tomorrow morning and have them correct that.
Is Mr. Thurman on?
He is. I believe he's still on.
I am. Let's, I don't know exactly how to approach this. But this document that Mr. Keenan had given me, there is a name, David Greer, on it. I didn't, it was oversight on my part. Mr. Greer contacted myself today as far as giving him a price on some stuff that's from another development, not anything to do with this. And of course, I told him at the time that if anything come, you know, if, but this area that he was working was called East Wind over off of...
Enhanced.
Yeah, it's in Hampstead. And I'm just giving him a price on stuff. And I informed him that I was on the planning board. And I did not know, when I saw Hardison Building Group, I did not know that this is affiliated to it. So I'm thinking that I should, you know, abstain from voting or recuse myself. This is not gonna make any difference to me, but I just don't want anything coming back to the board. What's Mr. Thurman's thoughts on that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, and perhaps we can get some clarification. I mean, what is Mr. Greer's involvement with the powerful that it issues here?
Well, I was looking through this.
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yes, sir.
I printed that out. Mr. Thurman, this is Mr. Keenan. I printed that out. That is from the GIS. The track, if you look at the D, the D is the advance of the property. That came from January of two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Keenan, if you could speak into the mic.
That came from January of two thousand and twenty-four. That was the transfer of the property from Mr. Greer to Mr. Hardison.
Okay.
The Pender County GIS has not, has not updated their records to reflect the current ownership after, you know, approximately seven months.
Okay.
So that's where that is. Mr. Greer does not have any ownership interest, and I'm aware of that property.
Okay.
Can the applicant come forward and confirm that for the record?
I'm sorry, Chairman Jordan, I was trying to get your attention there. Mr. Keenan is correct. Mr. Greer owned the property, but he sold it to Mr. Hardison.
Okay.
And there's no partnership or co-mingling there.
I just didn't want nothing to come back on the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And just one more question, clarity. There's no contingent sale or anything like that? I mean, it was a straight sale that has gone through. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Thurman.
Okay. Then, Mr. Chairman, given that, I would say, and I very much appreciate you raising the issue. As always, you are, you know, an example of the good way things are done. So, but with, given that it closed, and somebody's gonna have to help me, I guess, right at nine months ago, there would be no, there would be no conflict at all, in my opinion, and that would be my advice to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thurman. All right. I'm sorry. Where were we? Mr. Keenan had a...
I was just gonna say that this reminds me of the case we heard out on the other side of Rocky Point on Little Kelly, where you have a growing area, and the market, you know, saw a need of something. And it was pretty split, you know, in this body. And this is similar, but there are differences because of the topography, I believe. I do know that the traffic is very bad on that road. I've almost been head-on on that road myself. I drive that road every day on the way to this. Not every day, but whenever we have meetings, I come down that road. I do know that Shaw Highway is growing, and there's traffic. There are times that I wish there was a gas station closer, but that's my own personal preference, and I'm not going to weigh that in here because I do think there's some issues with flooding here as well that we need to consider. That road right there is where they put the, "Don't go any further every time there's a major storm." That's exactly where those signs go up. Now, could that have a community benefit for getting to gas or convenience? I know crime is always a question of any type of commercial. But, you know, is it a benefit for that to be there versus the flooding and the impact that could have every so often? So I haven't actually come to a conclusion on any of that yet, but I just wanted to kind of share my thoughts.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Mr. Jordan, if I may real quick, can you, can you, do you mind pulling up the lot lines again for me real quick one sec? Okay. This, this property right here, whatever it's labeled RP, Mr. Hardison owns all these as well. So he just needs this domino to fall, and then you guys can't beat him. You won't be able to deny him, you know, rezoning this one, and then this one, and then this one. If you try, I'll just beat you in court because you already accepted that one.
All right. Thank you.
You're familiar with this area, right?
Yeah, yeah. That sure doesn't look like a foot of water.
That's a lot of water.
Yeah, that's the bar, that's all up to this, up to the, the stop on it. And obviously, this shows the street sign for Shaw Highway as well. This, this is the picture that Mr. Cannon had put out. I'm sure many of you are aware of it. That is definitely concerning to me. That is not a foot of water.
You know, even though it didn't flood there a couple of weeks ago, that business would have been on an island for a week. And many businesses can't sustain being closed for a week like that if their employees can't get to work.
Oh, I understand. This, this meeting not, there is proper ways to do this, sir. And shouting from that audience is not one.
I'm sorry, I just.
That's okay. This meeting was, was postponed because of that. This meeting was scheduled for last month. And, and we postponed it because of the flooding. The flooding because, well, several, several reasons. One is staff safety, our safety getting there, and of course, you, you guys' safety to be able to come and, and reach out and, and let us know your feelings. And I totally understand that. I totally do. I'm, I'm more con, I'm concerned about environmental impacts personally. Do we have any questions for staff? Do we have any concerns? Talk amongst ourselves or discuss what you? I'm sorry, Mr. Fitz.
Is there a, I mean, I'm looking at the picture of the flooding. What government agency would be charged with dictating whether a gas station could go there or not based on flooding?
There's the county. So the county regulates development in flood zones. Um, we don't prohibit development in flood zones. We just have additional standards that must be met.
Have certain things that have to be above flood level.
That's right.
And I know that with those construction and.
Sure.
I mean, there's no dispute that that's a lot of water shown in the picture, but I, I just don't feel like we can prevent everything that flooded in Florence from being developed upon.
Well, would we de, would we deny it if somebody wanted to build a house there? Would we say where it might flood so you can't build there?
Well, I think if they were to build above the base flood elevation and meet all the criteria, they could certainly build there. And this is the same thing. They're building above the flood elevation.
Ju- just out of curiosity, so if the, if the five-hundred-year flood event from Florence was at twenty-five point one uh, feet freeboard, right? How, so this is obviously a lot higher than that. So how, um, why would it be that, I guess, is my question? Why would it only be twenty, twenty-five feet or whatever it was and not?
Twenty-three point six.
Twenty-three point six.
Uh, so flood maps, and I'll defer to the engineer if, if need be here, but flood maps are based. Sure.
Just real quick, if we can get in there.
My house is at eighteen in Wilmington. Luke Meanness, Stroud Engineering Wilmington, one oh-two D, send them a drive. My house is at elevation of like eighteen or nineteen. It didn't flood during Florence. The twenty-five is only applicable to a certain place up the river. You know, you can jump in the water and get your knees wet and boon, or you can go down the same river and jump in the water and just go up to your knees in, in Charleston. It, it's just a matter of where you are. So that twenty-five is only applicable to a certain distance upstream. So the same elevation, twenty-seven or twenty-three or twenty-five, it doesn't apply all up and down the county. It's not as.
So what you're saying is there's an area, and this area is twenty-three or whatever it is, but there are points in the area that could be thirty?
Yes. As you look at a flood map, it's got lines, transect lines drawn across it where the further down the stream you get, the lower that elevation is, and the further up the stream, the higher the elevation, because it's, it all, the flood slopes. So that, there's not really anything, a twenty-five measured at some bridge somewhere, even a mile away, has no bearing on the, whatever the, the elevation was. I'm curious what the elevation was at the bottom of the stop sign. I'm gonna figure that out. Again, the, uh, a couple of feet of water on the site. That's, that's from, uh, an email from Tommy Batson. I didn't observe it, but I do have a good benchmark now. So, um, I'll certainly find out what that elevation is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You know, I just come back to like our responsibility as a planning board is that, you know, we follow the policies and we interpret the policies. We get in the weeds of the details. And when things are inconsistent with our policies, then we try to figure out if it makes sense or not. You know, is it, does it make sense? And while I do think there's a growth in this area, uh, I'm not sure the site is appropriate. Because of the flooding primarily.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything they want to add or discuss? Want to make a motion, Damian? Hold on just one second. Now, this will come before the county commissioners, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, just for the members of the audience, the planning board is a recommending body. They make a recommendation. The Board of Commissioners make the final decision. So the decision made by this board this evening is, is a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, which will hear this case if a decision is made today, next month.
Thank you. I'm entertaining a motion.
I make a motion to deny the zoning map amendment to make a finding of denial, because the proposal is not consistent with our future land use map or the zoning uses. And the, for that denial, that this isn't an appropriate site for this type of use.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Grandfest. All in favor of voting to deny? Aye. Any opposed to the denial? Any abstain? Your, your motion has been, I mean, I'm sorry, your application has been denied. And of course, it will go to the county commissioners.
October twenty-first, the case will be heard again in this room by the Board of Commissioners, seven PM.
So please come back and state your concerns to the county commissioners. They have the final vote. We're just a recommending board. Thank you.
October twenty-first.
All righty.
No discussion items from staff, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And as the pictures work out as well.
Yes. That's old.
That, that's old. Really? I mean, I knew it was flooded. Unless they get a stop sign driven underground.
I mean, and I, there's a need for something like that in that area. And I've driven back from plenty of baseball games, and my kid, Eddie's a bathroom. He was like, we gotta wait to Maple Hill, you know, we gotta get gas, so. And that area's growing, as you all know.
Isn't that what they made the big bushes for, though?
Bottles.
I'm sorry, get sidetracked. But I was coming from Wallace one day, and I seen this guy that had pulled over on the shoulder of the road, and he had this little tent that's like this big square that he, obviously got from Cabela's or Bass Road. And I'm like, you know, that's a great idea. I've got one in my truck. Because, because I used to do a lot of work at, I'm sorry to get off the subject, at Riceville Beach. And you know, you're right here, you're right here. You, uh, you know, if you use a bothered truck, somebody's sitting there looking out the window at you. But anyway, it's, it's not a bad thing to have. And it doesn't take up, but it's about this big and it, and like that. And it's probably, I'm sorry. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, next, next month's meeting, October first?
Yes, sir, here in Burgal.
Okay. And we have two items on the agenda thus far?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So we have just the storm, the set, the sewer system, and what else?
Enclosed boat storage facility in Hampstead.
Okay.
Uh, it's been on the agenda a couple of times.
Do we have a work session on?
At six PM, we'll be discussing a, a couple of upcoming text amendment ideas as well as comprehensive plan progress.
Okay. And, um, this stormwater, or this, the wastewater treatment plant, is there a way to have a representative from Pluris explain to that to us or have something from Pluris about, as a, they're, they're an outside party? Now, I don't know who the operator of this proposal is. It may be Pluris, but, uh, they have a, I mean, I recommend anyone here who's not been to the Pluris Treatment Plant to go there and to help set that up.
That sounds very right.
Yes, because as representatives, there's a lot of information coming from those folks here, which is very valid. But if you go to that plant, that's what they're proposing, and it was eye-opening to me. I took my kids there during COVID. It's a field trip. I decided to get them out of the house. And I thought I was gonna have all types of odors and smells, and it was not that at all. In fact, their affluent runs through a pipe through their main house into an aquarium of fish to show that they know that if those fish die, they got a problem. But it's, those fish are, so they, it comes right through it. So it's like very clean water. And I think that it'd be powerful for us to see that, to understand exactly what is being proposed.
Are there requirement, I mean, I know there's state agencies that govern all the specifics, but downstream, obviously, when, especially when they know it's an existing flooding area, if they are gonna introduce that much more water, shouldn't there be some, something that they have to invest money to alleviate the possibility?
Question that we probably need to investigate.
They were saying, they were talking about spraying it on, on to the side farm.
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand a day. That's a lot of water.
It's a big, it's a big side farm up there, though, from my understanding.
That's still a lot of water. That's still a lot of water.
How many, how many acres? And, um, is this, if this is a private-owned, um, business, is it going, does the same rules and regulations or does the state oversee that, like the? Yeah, the Utilities Commission has to oversee all of them. You know, they have to. They could be privately owned or publicly owned. They're still subject to the Utilities Commission.
Let me, I'm sorry, let me jump in?
Yes, sir, Mr. Thurman.
A publicly-owned, a publicly-owned waste water or war is not subject to the Utilities Commission.
Public is not.
If it, no, it, it, the, the privately-owned, they're called public utilities, again, forgive me, but they're called public utilities, but they're actually privately-owned. Truly public utilities, i.e. Pender County Utilities, we are not subject to the Utilities Commission. And we have had multiple approaches from people in the past that we wanna build something and then have us operate it because the rates that you charge then are not subject to Utility Commission approval.
Interesting.
It's subject to the Board of Commissioners. So again, I just didn't want there to be, I'm not trying to, you know, uh, say against anybody or anything else. I just want you to understand that there's a, the public utility is really for privately, for the most part, privately-owned utilities. If it's a governmental entity that is operating a utility, we are not subject to the Utilities Commission.
Like, for instance, Pluris, are they subject?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, do you?
Plu- Pluris Sewer, they subject to?
Oh, yes, they're Pluris. Pluris is, um, again, we, for instance, cooperate with them by giving them the water usage. Because, uh, for the most part, you don't meter sewer. What you do is you meter the water that you use.
Yep.
And then you, you know, charge based on how much water a, a customer uses. As opposed to having a, a meter, you know, because not to get unpleasant, but meters on outgoing sewage flow can get a little messy. And so you don't tend to, it, it's, it's easier, simpler to just meter what goes in, and then you charge them based on that. Or you, you know, you charge them on the size of their pipe or, you know, but, but you don't really try to, for the most part, you don't try to meter sewer outflow.
Gotcha.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to prolong the meeting. I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to be sure everything's straight, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks.
They, they bring up Twenty-third Street one, and that's an old sewer plant. The newer ones are nothing like that at all.
It's a different type of plant.
A different, yeah. It's completely different.
That, that might be fair, but, you know, again, I think what, when we talk about the needs of the local community, right? And what's, convenience one day is an inconvenience the next day, or given the, the specific circumstances, and that's a valid question. No one purchased the property understa, with any understanding that they'd be building a sewer treatment plant, you know, in their backyard or anywhere close.
There was a sewage treatment plant approved there through a special use permit, oh-nine, and it expired. And so he, even now, then he downzoned it, and RP allows for a special use permit for, you know, wastewater treatment. Then he kept, you know, so, but it was, it was approved at one point.
Is that how we have RP, just this tiny little swath of RP standing in the middle of all this RA? Is that why that's there?
Ten acres was divided from a larger tract a few months ago.
I know we need them. I know the community needs them, but again, the consideration of zoning, prior zoning and, and existing people that residents that live there is a significant considerations.
Yeah.
It's a lot to think about. Anything else we need to add as far as next month's meeting for this particular, for the, for the wastewater treatment plant? I mean, we had a lot of issues. Um, I would, I would like to know if any of that is, um, considered wetlands.
The site, I, I took notes of what some of the questions that the board brought up, and I sent that to Mr. Potter.
Okay.
Um, you know, as a, a guide for some things that you should have prepared for the next year.
All right, very good.
And if the board.
And I'm sure the applicant may wanna, like, Mike Galant works for Pluris. He has a very good name with the county. He wrote some of our code. I mean, I don't know, you can implore the applicant to have someone like that to, to discuss what is going, what they're proposing, because he runs that plant.
And I'd be happy to, if any of the board members are interested in going to that plant, um, you know, touch base with Pluris about setting up a tour or some other visit, if you're interested, just let me know.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be as well.
It's my intentions to, to visit there.
Can't all do it together, though.
I'm sorry.
Can't all do it together.
County business.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, true. If it's.
I'm not kidding.
We can do it in shifts.
Yeah, you do. I mean, yes.
If it's more than two people, two of us, we can't, I mean.
There, I guess it would be a quorum of the board, but just for, uh, let's, we'll work on that, keep it at a two.
All right.
Or fewer.
Fair enough. Don't wanna do nothing unethical. All right, very good. Next month's meeting, of course, October the first. At six, we'll have a workshop, and then at seven, we'll have two items on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And then who's the pizza party at eleven? And then who's the pizza party at eleven?
Trey was supposed to bring pizza today. Maybe he'll, maybe he'll bring some in a month.
Because it's, I got a feeling it's gonna be a, a busy one.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.